Hi, everybody.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Eric.
Thanks for your nice text today, Ray. That was very nice of you to say.
It was a nice article.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, seven o'clock, and it looks like we have a quorum, so we will call the meeting to order. And welcome everyone to the April 4th Planning Board Meeting. I'm Teresa Thompson, Planning Director for the town of Pittsboro. I'm opening the meeting tonight. For those who don't know, Grayford Bland has resigned from the planning board. So we spoke with him last week, and we asked him if he would come back and meet with us when we are able to meet in person, so we can formally thank him for his service to the town, and he agreed to that. We're also going to reach out to Steve Cockman. Hopefully, we'll be meeting in person shortly and do the same. So hopefully, we can have an in-person meeting in May and have both of them attend those meetings. So first on the agenda is introduction of the planning board members, and it looks like we have everyone here. So to confirm, we have Alfreda Austin, William Baker, Eric Braun, Carl Schaefer, Ray Carney, who will be filling in tonight for the open seat, and Charity Myers. I saw her. I saw her name earlier. She's still on. Yes, I see her now, and she will be filling in tonight as well as a voting member for the ETJ open seat. So we do have certification of quorum. We have six members present. And next on the agenda is election of the chair. And this is just to serve the rest of this current term, which ends in December, just for clarification. So does anyone have any comments or questions before we open the floor for nominations and then a motion? Okay, if not, is there a nomination for someone to serve as the chair?
Earl Schaefer here. I would like to nominate Eric Braun for chair.
Okay.
Alfred Austin, and I'll second that.
Okay, so that was a motion and a second. Is there any discussion over the motion?
I will just stop and ask Eric. I was hoping we would talk today, but that did not happen. Eric, are you still, I perceive, in acceptance of this?
Yes, very much, Carl. I'm happy to step in and complete Ray's term for him.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Please say no. All right, that motion is approved. So thank you, Eric Braun. You're the new chair.
Thank you, Director.
I will now turn the next item over to you.
All right, thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
We have the position of Vice Chair, which is open to nominations now. If there are any questions or discussions before we call for nominations? If not, does somebody have a nomination for the Vice Chair position? If not, I'll step forward and I'll nominate Carl Schaefer, if Carl would be willing to step into the board.
I am willing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, William Baker. Can we have a vote, please, then? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? And it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Schaefer, your Vice Chairman, for the duration until December, when our terms end.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. I'm not going to drag this out because somebody told me there's a basketball game, I think, out tonight. Could that be true? Everybody with UNC ties is smiling, and everybody with Duke ties is grimacing. So I apologize to Duke fans and send my condolences. Let's turn now to the minutes of our last meeting, which, believe it or not, was back in February, February the 7th. I trust everybody's had a chance to look at them. Are there any amendments or changes that need to be made to the minutes before we call for a motion to adopt? I'm not hearing any, so I'm assuming the minutes look all right to everyone.
I'll make a motion. We'll prove the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Frida.
Second, Carl Schaefer.
Thank you, Carl. Can we have a vote on the acceptance of the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, aye? And we have unanimous approval of the minutes for February 7th. Moving on now, I guess I skipped over the adoption of the agenda. Do we need a motion on that? Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Got ahead of myself.
Carl Schaefer, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Will you take a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Signed unanimously to me. All right, new business. First item being a site plan amendment, which is for the Chatham Concrete Supply Company. It's Amendment SP 2019-02-802. Who's presenting for us?
That's going to be me, Mr. Chairman. Let me share my screen. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is the minor site plan amendment for approval. This will not go to the VOC. The planning board has the as the deciding vote tonight. The site is located at 259 Moncur Pittsboro Road, just east of the Sanford Road and Moncur Pittsboro Road intersection. The site is zoned M2, and it was previously approved for a concrete mixing plant and a 2,000-square-foot office with nine employees and three trucks. There have been a few amendments proposed to the site, which have been shown on the plans that you've been given and noted in the memo that you've received. Staff has reviewed this by all appropriate departments and is recommending that you make one of the following motions tonight. If there are any questions, the applicant and their engineer are here, if you have any questions for them.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do we have questions for the applicant?
Carl Schaefer, I have questions for staff. Victoria and/or Teresa, are there changes? We see a note of about 10 changes. Do all those fall within appropriate guidelines for setbacks, impervious surface, et cetera?
Yes, the changes to the site plan all fall within the regulations of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So as
I would like to make
Oh, go ahead, Bill. Yes, please.
William Baker, I'd like to make a statement. I was employed by Caparretta mixed across the street previously, but I am no longer employed by them, and I have no financial interest in them.
So it sounds to me as though you need not refuse yourself. Any other comments from the board before we call for a motion? We can take a motion either to approve or to deny. Do I hear a motion?
Carl Schaefer, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Alfreda Austin, I second that.
Thank you, Frida. Let's now take a vote. All in favor of the approval of these site plan amendments, say so, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like that's passed unanimously. Thanks, everybody. That's SP 2019-02-802 approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Victoria. The next item is the conditional rezoning on Park Drive. And who's presenting here? Janie, is that you? All right, welcome. This is your first presentation to us, isn't it? Oh, well, excellent. Best wishes. You have the floor.
Okay, I was just getting set up, is all.
Loud and clear.
There you go. Okay. So this is for 102 Park Drive. Let me make sure it's all working. Here's a look. It's off of Hillsborough Street or 15501 North, right behind the current Alpha Center. It's currently zoned R12, which is medium-density residential, and it's adjacent to C2, which is the highway commercial. And they're requesting a variety of uses, which they have listed out in the packets that were given out. As far as the land use map, it's also shown as being medium-density residential, but it's adjacent to the mixed-use town center. This is their conceptual plan, showing a 21,000-plus-minus two-story office building, property lines, and also the potential residential area. And they're showing access through the existing Alpha Center, because there is a water feature on the southern portion of the property adjacent to Park Drive. So they're not proposing to cross that. They're proposing to use the existing the existing site in front of it. And then we've provided both the approval and denial statements for you all, which were all through the staff analysis. And I believe the applicant is here. I see Brandon on there. Brandon, for the applicant.
Yes, I'm here for questions or if you need further background and elaboration, and also Randy Bowler is here, who is with VRC, the owners of the property.
Oh, well, I'll ask the leadoff question, then. Mr. Moore, I've walked past this address many times. Is there any structure at all at 102 Park Drive now?
I think there is a shed marked on the survey, the back portion of the property. It might even say abandoned shed. It's on the survey map, and it would be at the real northeast corner of the site, but no structure other than that. And I think that one is it's just an abandoned remnant.
Yeah, I couldn't see anything from the street or from the Alpha's parking lot. What about the distance between the your plot that you propose a rezoning and the the nearest residence, which would be, I guess, 166 Park Drive? About how much separation is there?
Can you, Janie, can you pull back up the exhibit?
Yeah, I'll pull up the complete file of your exhibit.
I believe it's about 100 foot from the residence to their property line, and then we had a 20-foot buffer. From memory, I think it was 20 foot on that side. Just scroll down there. Okay, 15 foot, so it's roughly 115 foot from our internal setback, internal buffer, to the adjacent residence.
And I'm sorry, I don't recall. What is the water feature that was referred to?
The stream.
Just a stream?
That goes, yeah, and there'll be a vitated buffer on it. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Other board members, questions?
I have one question. Is there only access across somebody else's property?
The properties are both owned by the same individual. VRC is they're representing, I mean, the Alpha Center and the new property are they're in cooperation with each other totally.
So in a sense, this is an expansion of the Alpha Center footprint?
It is. It's designed to work together, and it's it serves a nice purpose of access without crossing the stream again, and I think it's it's a good partnership or a good overall site design.
Right. I mean, since the ownership is that common, would you expect at some point to create ingress egress to Hillsborough Street, perhaps along the northern edge of Alpha Center?
Yeah, we showed a potential property line. What is envisioned now isn't, wouldn't take up the whole site. And the Alpha Center has more parking than they need. So we think that in the future, that upper portion may be recombined into a single development parcel. Or it could be developed independently, but since it's a common ownership, you know, there's the possibility of working together on a recombination. There's all that.
And you've got a long list of potential uses. Is that list of potential uses applying to the proposed two-story office structure on the southern, the southern portion of your proposed rezoned property?
Yes, it does apply to the entire property, but I think the reason that there's such a long list is it was really taking the list of approved uses and excluding things that were detrimental to the community. And most of these seem like they would be pretty benign and non-controversial, so we've left those on there. But I don't think there's there's not a specific intent to use any particular use other than what we've shown.
Are you notionally proposing to build that two-story office building and then go in search of a tenant? Is that sort of the direction you're heading?
I think there's been preliminary discussions, but to my knowledge, there's not an agreement signed for that, so it's a potential use that has, I mean, there is a need for that in the area, I think, an identified need from the owner.
All right, I'll pipe down now and ask four questions from other board members who might want to jump in here.
My question is
Go ahead, Charity.
Go ahead.
My question is, are there any current residents to the north of this plot of land? And what's that setback there? I see there's some more residential.
Not directly adjacent, but that's because of just the way the property lines are safe. There's vacant parcels to the north.
Okay.
And they're kind of like the backwoods of the people who live up on Hillsborough.
Okay, thanks.
Well, the property directly west of it has been sold.
Yeah. Probably west of it has been sold?
Webster property, which 766, I think it is.
Oh, okay.
I talked to the owner today. They just sold that property.
I think we had heard that that was possibly coming and at our neighborhood meeting, and so we're not surprised by that.
Carl Schaefer here, Mr. Chair. I we're, I think we're fast losing our traditional neighborhood in Pittsboro. And we do see a lot of commercial growth, and that's not a bad thing. But personally, with the list of possible uses that are being proposed here in that traditional neighborhood area, albeit they're not very, very close to adjacent homes, I still, I still have a little bit of heartburn with the potential uses that are listed here along with the loss of a traditional neighborhood. We do see, I guess it's not technically a site plan that they've showed where their office building is, but it's my understanding, and I'd be glad to be corrected by Janie or anybody, Teresa, what they show here, if it's not technically an approved site plan, is really conceptual, which means they could, they could propose any of those uses. They could even propose access coming off of Park Drive. I know they say they're not going to, but if we approve it as it's submitted, there's nothing preventing them from coming in with a new site plan or a site plan, getting wetland permits to cross that drain, and those homes that are due west of here, that front on Park Drive, some of those, some of those already have trouble with surface water. And now we're going to put another acre and a half of impervious surface upstream. That's only going to land for more potential problems for that watershed, which drains basically due west coming in, coming off of Park Drive. You know, we've all seen the flooding in the old car dealership, which is the property due west, I mean, due east of what's proposed here. And that's only going to get worse if we do reasonable, you know, a reasonable amount of impervious area on that. So those are, those are all my concerns with this proposal.
Noted. Let me ask one further question, and that is, what about the town water and sewer allocation or availability to this property?
That for staff?
Yeah, of course, staff or for you, Mr. Moore, either one. How will, how will those people in the residential facility flush their toilets?
This is Teresa Thompson. I can speak to that. Yes, sir. So we are down to about 2,000 gallons per day, so there would not be enough sewer allocation for another development at this time. And I can also speak towards the comment regarding the minor modifications that would be allowed to a conceptual plan. This would be called a conceptual development plan. And per the UDO, even though it is called conceptual, only minor modifications to the plan can be approved by staff, such as limited changes addressing technical considerations that could not reasonably be anticipated during the conditional zoning process that have no material effect on the uses permitted in the overall density or the overall density in the approved development. And some of the examples of minor deviations that can be approved by staff include driveway locations, structure for plan revisions, minor shifts in building size or location, and facility design modification, modifications for amenities and the like. So it is, only minor modifications can be approved by staff. Otherwise, the request would have to go back through the conditional rezoning process again. And I also wanted to mention with the, with the access that there would need to be a either or, I need to confirm this, but an easement and/or right-of-way fronting this property. So if they are not going to be accessing Park Drive, then there would need to be a designated means of access.
Would that require a further modification of the conditional zoning down the road?
So if looking at the standards in the UDO for access for lots, so for the single-family detached, a right-of-way would be required. And for anything non-residential or multifamily or non-residential, it could be a right-of-way or easement. So if, basically what that means, if they were to come in to have site plan approval by the planning department, we would need to ensure that they meet those standards.
Thanks. I see Mr. Bowler has raised his hand. Randy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to put a few things on record. Number one, all of this property used to be part of properties owned by J.A. Webster and his wife Sylvia. J.A. used to be town board member and has passed, and Sylvia has sold the house. It was subdivided in the past. We have an office at the Alpha Center, but the property is owned by a longtime friend and client of mine, and the company is Viological. They own both properties. So we're here representing them with Brandon. I don't own the property. Just wanted So we're here representing them with Brandon. I don't own the property. Just want to be clear about that. They are a friend and client. When he purchased the property from J A and his wife, and Mr. Mestick was the closing attorney, it was understood years ago that they would make an application to extend the C two zoning, but the client just never did so. And when they made an application last year, it was going to be for a straight zoning. And I, I think Planning Director Teresa remembers this, and we withdrew it after having community meetings and people down the road rather would want the client to pursue a conditional zoning and limit the uses. They were worried most, mostly of somebody trying to build a dense amount of apartments on the site. And these are people in Kensington that came to the office and met. We had a number of meetings with folks and said, well, would you rather conditional that the town would limit it? And they said yes, so we withdrew the application and resubmitted a new application with a new fee. Mr. Schaefer makes excellent points. I'm quite familiar with the drainage. It's coming down fifteen five oh one. And some of that comes from Chatham Forest that goes through that sixty-inch culvert on fifteen five oh one and goes down Park Drive. One of the problems is that the people, when they develop those houses down the street on in Kensington, do not have sixty-inch culverts. So it's difficult to pour a quart into a pint. I've made that point many times in the past to our planning staff when Mr. Monroe is here, et cetera. But it is what it is. And in discussing this site over the years, the reason that we chose to show a non-access to Park Drive was to open up the possibility that if the town chose to engage the landowner, perhaps they could construct a pond or some type of stormwater detention in that area that would actually help the issues that have occurred downstream that occur anyway, whether this property was developed or not. And we thought, and also from a a look, as you said, Eric, that you walked by the site, it just seemed better to not put a driveway in there and clear it and to leave, you know, a hundred and fifty feet of buffer. So we have communicated to town that we'd be open, that the landlord would be open to that dialogue about working together. And hopefully that could be done, but in any case, we felt it was better to not disturb the area. The reason the client even pursued this was Spectrum wanted to put a large office in Chatham County. And this sounds odd, they, they wanted more parking and they wanted it to be secured. And the current zoning did not allow the client to actually construct a secure parking lot behind the Alpha Center, so that they could park vans, et cetera. And so they said that they would want to lease a certain amount of space. So the client started this project literally a year and a half ago with the idea that a user might want to have access to a secure place to park and have offices in the daytime and be able to access it through the Alpha Center. In any case, the, the intention is to be mindful of the impervious surface, and that's why a stormwater pond is there and to work with the town. I as well am open to questions. I hope that that provided some backstory and, and some context. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowler. The, the backstory is always fascinating to hear. Has Director Thompson, has the, the, the town engineer looked at the the drain issues that Mr. Bowler raised? Vis a vis stormwater?
I'm, I'm not sure if the engineer has looked at it at this, this level of detail that's been provided. But we have had conversations about the, the issues on the property before with the property owner and understand what they are saying. And I, so I just wanted to clarify too, that if it's not the intent to have a right-of-way, let's say on the northern piece, and both pieces would be accessed through, let's say, an easement. There are variations that are allowed through the conditional rezoning process if approved by the board. So if, if the staff would like to, or excuse me, if the applicant would like to request a variation to a U D O standard, they, they can do so. And we can forward that to the Board of Commissioners and include that in, in the staff report as well.
Okay.
Eric, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Ray.
There's three point seven acres, seven nine acres, I believe, on this site. What percentage is wetland? Anyone there give me an answer?
They show point nine seven acres for potential residential.
You, you broke up a little bit, Janie. Can you repeat, please?
Point nine seven acres.
That, that's not wetlands. It was a question about.
You mean, well, it was, there's a channel, there's a stream channel that's down on the, the south portion of the site. It's a linear feature. It's quantified by length. Let's see, across the whole frontage, and I don't have that number right in front of me, but you can see the panel marked there with the thirty foot buffer around it.
I am unsure if any of that is, is wetlands, but in order to impact it, we'd have to go through the application process with the town, which has a buffer process that have to be delineation. But we're not intending, if you look directly to the east, there already is an access to Park Drive. So it just seems logical to not disturb any of that area and keep it natural. Because there's already a crossing and both properties are owned by the same property owner. And why have another access point there when you don't need one?
Well, my reference for an access point, what, what, through my mind is, is we have three point seven nine acres. Is there a possibility of another building going on that property somewhere down the road? I know we're applying, but that doesn't mean we can't come back and put a different structure on there. At a different, and so I just was wondering how much of that land is determined to be wetland, which means it cannot be built on.
Well, if you look, you can see the one hundred-year floodline, which is plotted there. You can see a good portion of that. You could never build anything on it. I'm not sure how much that is. That might be, I mean, to be calculated by Brandon, but you're not going to be building anything on that. That's always going to be green.
Well, that was the reason for my question on what land.
Yeah, that's not ever going to be built on.
Okay, that's the answer I was looking for.
And that's, that's the area that Janie's just indicated with an orange line.
So if they, if someone come in later on, property was sold and said they wanted to develop that, that couldn't happen, correct?
No.
Thank you.
Not without rezoning.
Right. Any other questions from the board? Well, then we come to the land use plan consistency statement, which we can either choose to approve or deny. Do I hear a motion for either of those conditions? This is for the land use consistency statement. We'll vote on the conditional rezoning after this. Do I hear a motion to approve the land use plan consistency statement?
Carl here, Mr. Chair. I move to approve statement number one, that the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the town land use plan.
We have a second to Carl Schaefer's motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Carl.
I might need to restate what I'm thinking here, and I'm going to ask for clarification from Teresa. If, if I chose number one, I was reading under the approval sign when I'm leaning towards denial. Do I need, do I need to reclarify my motion?
For, yeah, and for clarification, the, the approval or the request is not consistent with the land use plan. So that's already established. So if you look, if you look at the agenda packet, there's two motions listed there. You have a recommendation to approve or a recommendation to deny. So if you make a, make a recommendation to approve the conditional rezoning request, that also includes the adoption of the town of Pittsboro Planning Board Land Use Plan Consistency Statement for Approval. So that includes one, two, and three on the left side. But it's already established that it's not consistent with the land use plan. But that's not, it doesn't have to be consistent. You can still approve a rezoning, even if it's not consistent. But it, it does have to be stated. And we also have to state that if the rezoning is approved, that automatically amends the land use plan so that it becomes consistent. And we would do that by reclassifying the property to the mixed-use town center land use classification, which is number two.
Okay, I think I got all that, and thanks for reminding me of that.
You want to withdraw your, withdraw your motion and make a new motion?
I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm only eighty or ninety percent clear and have not a hundred percent. I am going to move that the project is denied and that statement number one, under the denial. Well, I guess both statements are applicable. It is not consistent with the land use plan, and the rezoning is not reasonable. And, and my, my justification for the motion is the variety of potential uses proposed under the C Z.
We have a second to Carl Schaefer's motion, motion to deny. So a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Baker. We'll have the pleasure of the board then, all in favor of the denial. Signal by saying aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Carl.
Maybe you should see if there's any more discussion.
Well, we should ask for more discussion. Does anyone else want to come forward to a, a comment further on the motion of denial?
Can I make a statement?
Please.
So you, you as a board are also allowed to, as long as the applicant agrees, to remove some of the uses as well. So if you don't, if you don't agree with them requesting the use of like a parking lot as a principal use, and the applicant agrees to remove it, then we can revise those statements to remove some uses.
Does that change your feelings at all, Carl? Would the board like to remove some of the potential or the proposed uses?
I have to answer yes, but there's so many here. There's like fifteen. I don't, I don't really know how to pick and choose. You know, there's, it, it, it's a function of uses, but it's also a function of, of impervious surface. You know, things I mentioned earlier about impact on, on, on neighbors, especially downstream neighbors. And admittedly, there are some, there are some homes down there, west of this property, that I wish had never been placed where they are. But now they're there, and they are residents of our town, and we need to honor that. So thanks, thanks, Janie, for offering that up, but I, I, I wouldn't know where to start on that.
Well, and you can also, you have up to three meetings as a board to make a recommendation.
I didn't, I didn't catch, yeah, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing.
What Janie is saying is that we could, we could bring this back to next month's meeting so that you have time, so that the board has time to consider what, what of the proposed uses they might deem inappropriate.
So just, I mean, maybe just a point of, of comment then, Eric, is if, if my motion dies, for lack of a second, then I might make another motion that we table it till next month. But, but anyway, I'm just going to wait. I'm going to wait and see, see how it goes.
All right. Do, do I hear a second to Carl's original motion that we deny the request for conditional zoning based upon the land use inconsistency? And I don't hear a second. So Carl, do you have a revised or a replacement motion you care to make?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair. I move that we table this application until the next month's meeting. With the thought that all of us do our due diligence in looking over these aspects that have been raised and talk with the staff and see what might be the best course of action.
Okay, is there a second to that motion then, that we table this for a month so that we can further consider the proposed uses?
Can I ask a question prior?
Go ahead, Ray. Sure.
It's currently zone residential twelve, correct?
Correct.
So if, if we look at the list of options for that particular piece of property, and we say maybe dog kennels and stuff, there's too much noise for that area. We, we don't want to see it there. With everything else removed, if they built in multifamily dwellings and there's going to be just as damaging to the property or to the water flow, would it be then what they're planning on doing?
Well, I, I mean, that, that's, that's a question, that's a good question, Ray. I mean, and I, I suppose that I would, I would be very much interested to know what sort of a septic field this property would support, given that town sewer connection is not available. And I guess we don't really, we don't really have an answer on that, do we?
So I do not.
You haven't a know?
I do not think septic would be an option for this property. Given that it's within close location to town utilities.
So if there's, if there's city water but no septic or, or no sewer, then you're not going to be able to flush anything, so it's going to have to be some sort of passive use. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're not, we're not approving a development permit. We're only approving a rezoning. So there's no expiration date to a rezoning. I think the U D O states if after three years, activity has not been made, then the town could consider possibly rezoning it, you know, maybe back to what it was before. The, the purpose of conditional rezonings is to have a, a project in mind so that it can actually start in the near future. That's why it's, they typically show illustrations and have a limited list of uses. So that being said, there, there would need to be sewer allocation for, for this project to be able to move forward. So in order for them to have site plan approval, zoning permit approval, building permit approval, that would need to be done. So it's just not, it's not done at this time. So they're just asking for a rezoning. But they, they would not be able to pursue any sort of development-related permits until there, there is sewer allocation available.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address your question, sir?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I think the, the, the motion that was put forward is wise, and we can certainly interact with staff and the board and board members to say, winnow down the list. I mean, that list was just, as Brandon was saying, going through what's in the U D O that seemed reasonable. But the property owner has had a desire to kind of connect this with the current property, the Alpha Center, and do this for years, and it's just not moved forward to do anything. I think the rezoning it is, is to put it in a, a, a position that if, you know, Spectrum or somebody needing office space and needing to have like blue collar space in the Alpha Center were to approach them again, they would be in a position to actually work, move forward. Right now, they are not. So that, that, that project had to die on the vine, and they, they moved it to Morrisville. So that, that's why they want to have this done, as the planning director is saying. I don't think there'd be anything applied for or built during the time that we don't have sewer. It's just to be ready in case that opportunity comes forward again. And that frankly is just an office use with perhaps using part of the Alpha Center if they needed that space too. So it's been, yeah, they've had, it's been about a year and a half, they've been looking at this. And they're more than willing to take the time to talk to you to figure out, maybe there only needs to be three or four uses.
Right. Yeah, thanks for the clarification on that. All right, so we have Carl's motion on the floor to table this. To table this till our next meeting so that the applicant can further interact with uh town planners and uh. Perhaps wino down this list of proposed uses and the uh. The applicants so willing to do that. Do I hear a second to Carl's motion that we table this to next month's meeting?
I'll second it.
I think I heard uh Ray Carney come in with a second. Is that right?
Yeah, I said second, but.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Um. Is there any further discussion or question from the board on this motion to uh table the conditional rezoning request until next month's meeting? There being no discussion, we'll call for a vote of the board. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 All right. So Carl's motion to table this for one month uh is uh accepted uh. And conditional zoning requests are easy twenty-two dash oh one. For one of two park drive is tabled until our next regular meeting. Thanks very much, everyone. Moving on to our uh final uh. Issue for consideration tonight. I see Janie, you're up again.
This is going to be another short and sweet one. This is um. This plan was actually proposed uh in twenty nineteen and with COVID and. Other events happening. It's, it's been held off. And so now it's, it's had its public hearing already. And finally got to the planning board. Uh, multiple decisions on it the third cycle. Uh, the title of it is Robeson's Walk and it's a mixed use development. Just south of sixty-four Business East and it's on industrial, it's industrial Park Drive, I believe. Um, let me pull up my other notes real quick. The applicant is also here too, and I believe they should have a presentation, but I'll at least introduce it some.
Well, the applicants here, does the applicant wish to make a, uh, any presentation or give us any remarks on this?
I, I'll, I'll open it up and, and what I'm doing.
Go ahead, Janie.
Okay. So the total acreage is two hundred and twelve point seven two acres. They're proposing six hundred, a minimum of six hundred and maximum of nine hundred residential unit. Up to fifty thousand square feet if non-residential development. And it's a total of twenty-two properties. There have uh separate phases, which I'll show you in their, their conceptual plan. As far as the land use map, part of it is industrial and the other part of it is mixed use. Which is focused towards um sixty-four business. Here's their conceptual layout. They have four pods noted and then they have um the shaded areas. Are the commercial areas and then the blank areas are the residential or intended for residential. And we have provided again approval and uh denial statements. Um, but before we discuss those, I'll go ahead and let Laura um. I'll stop sharing my screen because I believe that she might have something to present.
Go right ahead. Laura, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, loud and clear.
Wonderful. So good evening. Uh, thank you all for your time tonight. Uh, Mr. Chair members of the planning board and staff, let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay, can y'all see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I am Laura Holman with McAdams. I'm the project planner uh for Robeson's Walk. Uh, for the record, our address is one Goldenwood Avenue, suite two zero one in Raleigh, two seven six zero three. So uh, thank you uh to staff, specifically uh. Ms. Phelps, who has done a wonderful job stepping in and I, uh, you're a seasoned veteran. I know it's your first time here tonight, but uh have done. A variety of, of things certainly in other places. So uh, we've worked closely with um Director Thompson and Ms. Phelps as well as um the town engineer and other members of staff getting to this point tonight. As Ms. Phelps mentioned, we did have last have a public hearing on this uh back in November of twenty twenty-one, but this. This um overall project has been around since twenty nineteen and we've kind of gone through the waves of having, you know, different uh. Staff look at it um and, you know, different town managers and whatnot, but we're certainly happy with uh, with where it is tonight and we think it's, uh, we think it's the best possible uh foot forward. Uh, when we last had our uh planning uh. Planning meeting on this for the public hearing, we got a lot of good feedback from both staff and the Board of Commissioners. And so at this time I'd like to go through uh some of the, some of that feedback and the changes that we've made as a result of that public hearing.
Go right ahead.
Okay, great. Uh, so the first thing that we heard is. We heard a lot about, well, why are we, why are we zoning this to a mixed use plan development? You know, what, what guarantees that this is, this is a mixed use and we're not just going to see. An overall uh commercial or residential. So our first uh iteration at the public hearing uh showed a minimum commercial square footage of ten thousand square feet, which uh staff had concerns about that that was too little. So we bumped that up uh to a minimum of forty thousand square feet. Um, and then of course, as staff mentioned, so that's a minimum of forty thousand square feet and a maximum of up to fifty thousand square feet of commercial. Also, a big uh discussion point was how are we assuring compatibility with the community and surrounding uses? There's a lot of concern uh with staff as well as the Board of Commissioners are, you know. Show us where the proposed commercial areas, you know, are, are going to be or could be. So we came in and, and you can see in the tan color that we've clearly defined these. Why are these where they are? Well, it makes perfect sense. Uh, you've got, you've got East Street and Highway sixty-four coming in. You've got the existing State Employees Credit Union. On the other side of industrial park drive is the pet store and other commercial uses. So it makes sense of. Developing a symmetry around those uses. As you go down industrial park drive in Pod D. You've got um this purple road, which will go down to the existing, existing Chatham Beverage District. So we've got um additional uh commercial uses that also could go um adjacent to those and start to create a neck, a, a nice transition of uses. And then we've got, um, so then you've got um the, the remaining um. White areas of Pod A, B, C, and D, which would, which could be uh residential uh uses. Uh, so that, that is also um a concern, which was, you know, delineating, show the mix of eaches, which we've done. We've also added um. Hot Pocket Park locations or open space locations will have these uh, will have, this is intended to be a very walkable. Mixed use type of development. Hey, not everybody, um, you know, can live in Chatham Park. We think this is a nice alternative and certainly. And certainly um will have a nice complement to Pittsburgh. You know, Pittsburgh's changing. We don't want to just see. Um, all, you know, all of Highway sixty-four just to be a bunch of fragmented industrial. We can have. These infill developments that speak nicely to the industrial and the commercial developments that have come up on Pittsburgh. And really um ensure that there's, that there's high quality development, that folks want to be. Folks now that are coming in, they wanna, they don't want to just, you know, work and uh get places to eat. They also want to live near these places. So this is what this is striving to create. We've also shown um required uh greenways along Robeson's Creek and showing connections from that greenway into our development. Again, this is all going to be. A very walkable, walkable and we've ensured that that happens. In terms of uh another um thing that we've talked about is we've also uh stripped out a lot. Of the extra text that was in the overall document. Because since, since twenty nineteen, you know, what's happened? Well, guess what? You guys have, have. Adopted and are continuing to work on and straighten out your wonderful UDO. I mean, before, when this was initially created, you had a, a separate zoning and a separate subdivision ordinance. So what we've done is we've taken out um these separate landscape standards that we had in here and these separate street standards. And we've, and we've said, okay, we're going to defer to your now robust UDO standards. So we're, we're gonna, so anything that gets um submitted at the time of any, anything that gets submitted at. A development plan or site plan or plummary plot, that has to meet that UDO in place today. We didn't have to do that. We're voluntarily doing that because we want. We want um town to really, to really understand that we are stepping up to the plate. And not trying to get out of anything um that you all have, have uh now, you know, straffed to create um, you know, in, in today's Pittsburgh. In terms of uh. Another thing that came up is affordable housing. You all have done a tremendous job. In developing an affordable housing plan and affordable housing incentive package. You've gone to great lengths. I know some of you probably on the sport, uh, in addition to staff and members of the Board of Commissioners have. Have actively volunteered your time on committees to talk about affordable housing. So we voluntarily uh committed uh to adding a zoning condition. That talks about how the developer is going to propose to construct at least ten percent of the total dwelling units in this development project. Units allotted for qualifying persons or qualifying households. Earning more than eighty percent up and including up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI for a period of ten years. And this is something that um Commissioners specifically asked for at the last meeting. So we really um. Looked at um incentive uh policy. And really tried to tailor it uh to meet, to meet our need and, and develop something that we think. Um, meets the current needs of, of Pittsburgh as, as we know. You, you all in Chatham County got some very exciting news last week with uh, with the auto plant. Congratulations. You know, these, these folks uh need. Need places to live and we're helpful. We're very excited to, to provide some, some workforce housing. So with that, I'll, I'll stop talking and open up the floor to any, any questions you all may have of me or my team. Thank you very much.
And thanks, Ms. Holman. Uh, questions from the board? Either for the, for the applicant or for uh town planning staff, Ms. Phelps? Director Thompson, any questions? Well, there being no further questions, the uh, the first step here in this process is either the uh approval of the land use consistency statement. Or the denial of the land use consistency statement. Do I have a motion on either one of these? Uh, the uh. Languages in the packet that you have. Entertaining the motion. And I guess Director Thompson, as you, uh, you explained earlier in the. Land use plan consistency statement for approval, the first point just indicates that uh. This uh. Rezoning would not be consistent with the current land use plan, but then that will be. Modified to uh reflect the. Wishes of the uh planning board and the town board.
Yes, sir. So you, you can make a motion for, to approve the request. Which would, which would include the adoption of the consistency statement for approval.
Right.
You can make a recommendation. If you look in the agenda, there's the two motions there. Um, you, or you can make a recommendation to deny their conditional rezoning request. And then if you, if you look down at the bottom of the motion, it says. Uh, and adopting the town of Pittsburgh Planning Board land use plan consist, consistency statement for denial. So.
We can, we can do it in all, uh, all in one pass.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. That's uh, that's uh, that streamlines, stream, streamlines it. Uh, do, do I hear a motion from the uh? Floor to either approve or deny this MUPD rezoning request?
Uh, I, Alfred Alston, uh, make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Frida. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Charity Mize.
Thank you, Charity. All right, uh, any further discussion from the board on this for the discussion or questions before I, I call for a vote?
And, and just for clear, for clarification, sorry, I just want to clarify. The, the motion also included. The adoption of the land use plan consistency statement for approval.
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much for the clarification. It's awesome. All right, we'll call for a vote of the board then if there's no further discussion or questions.
I, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead, Carl.
Or I, uh, for the applicant, Ms. Holman, uh. As, as I look at the map, which is C two point zero zero, uh, one you showed previously, uh, you show the. The commercial areas highlighted in brown. Uh, and then there's segregation Pod A, B, C, and D. And then the verbiage, the, you know, the text. If I can find it here, shows all these different uses. Uh, for example, Pod A. Use categories one, two, three, four, five. Uh. Is it, I mean, can we, can we assume that anywhere in Pod A, uh, whether it's white? Or the tan color will possibly get those uses uh of one, two, three, four, and five?
Great question. So it assumes that, that yes, uh, the, the. The commercial area, the commercial uses. Uh, so. Janie, I, I think that's Ms. Phelps there that put that up. So the, the land use types um. Correspond with those prohibited uses table, which is a very um dumbed down list of what we had previously. So anything in those um use class types could go in those pods. However. Only the commercial uses that are in that tan or beige color, whatever you want to call it, can go there. Does that make sense?
I think so. So, so I'm looking, let's look at A, for example. Uh, A has one, two, three, four, and five. Uh, under land use four, we have hotels, nursing homes, microbreweries. Are you saying that those uses, which I consider commercial, would be in the brown versus the white?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so that, that kind of shows me then if we're having nine hundred, is it nine, is it nine hundred, yeah, nine hundred residential units? That they're going to be very dense in the non-commercial area. I, I would have to presume. Do you have a, some kind of, oh, there it is. I think I just saw it fly by. A density table right there.
That's it.
Yeah, well, maybe not. Uh.
For generation, um. And that's an EIA. It's two hu, it's over two hundred acres and um. I mean, I'm not sure if the developer is determined, you know, specific lot sizes or not yet. But um, let me pull up one of their conceptual plans here.
But, but they'll have, they'll have multi, multifamily. I mean, that, it'll be like apartments and townhomes, I assume, to get that density.
Would, would that be correct, Ms. Holman?
I think that's a fair statement, yes.
Yeah, and, and that, that, it, it's almost, you know, immaterial, Eric. Uh, you know, what I, what I do love about this is if, if you look on the south.
Yeah.
Basically, they have open space, stormwater control and open space basically on the southern sixty-five acres.
Right.
Uh, which, you know, which definitely implies high density uh everywhere else, but the fact that they're going to retain that open space down. Down along Robeson Creek is, is uh, is uh, very nice feature.
That is desirable.
Yes.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Baker.
Are we in the same situation? We're on the other one that there's no sewer available? Or is that a moot point?
That's correct.
What?
That there is no sewer available at this time.
So I mean, what? If people, if if this is rezoned and there's no sewer available, the people sit on it five years. What's the top, the top of flipping it to somebody else? Uh and making a profit on it, never used it?
So that, well, if this property is rezoned M U P D, the only uh plans that can move forward. Is what's being, what would be approved at this time. It can change hands. Uh these land use approvals run with the land. Not with the property owner. So, you know, legally, it can change hands. Um the only plan that can move forward is what's being. Proposed and approved. Um if anything were to differ from that, they would have to come back through the process again. And and go through another rezoning of some sort. And and to answer your question. Yes, sir. And and to answer your question on.
To the same rules as it's the first time.
Well, they would, if they're going to rezone in the future, they're going to have to meet the standards in the future, whatever they are for rezoning.
Okay.
A piece of that. No, go ahead, Mr. McCauley.
Um my name is Mac McCauley. I'm with Parker Poe and I'm also representing the applicant. Uh I'm working with the town, with Chatham Park and with the city of Sanford. On a plan to get both water and sewer uh from Sanford to Pittsburgh and to some of these developments. So answering the planning board members' ultimate question, there are discussions in process to try and get the water. And sewer necessary for these developments.
Right. Thanks, Mr. McCauley. And I believe the uh I I've seen the mayor of Sanford quoted in the uh in the newspaper about this. I I assume the uh the uh the auto plant uh is going to accelerate the uh plans to extend the Sanford sewer and water uh north.
That's a fair statement, Mr. Chairman.
Good questions, all. Anything further from the board? We have a motion and a second. If there's no further question or discussion, I'll uh ask for the uh board to either. Uh make a recommendation or approve. I guess that's what we're voting on, isn't it? That was your motion uh.
Right, yeah. We're voting whether to approve or not, yes.
All right, and uh this uh of course incorporates the uh land use plan consistency statement. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Well, the M U P D zoning uh request passes unanimously. So thank you, everybody. Thanks to the applicant. Uh yeah, go ahead.
Eric, can I make a comment to the applicant?
Go ahead, Ray.
It's a, I believe this area is very historical, just so that they know about it. I believe there's a a very early graveyard. Off Industrial Drive. I just want to make sure they're aware of that. I believe this land belonged to George Lucas, who is um one of the founding fathers of the town. Some of the land.
All right, and I I would assume that those uh uh grave sites have been recorded in the uh in the in the county's registry, right, Ray?
Yeah, I just want to make sure they're aware of it.
Sure. All right, duly noted. Thanks very much. Uh we have a unanimous uh approval on this. Uh thank you to the uh. Applicants and the presenters and uh Ms. Phelps, congratulations on your first two presentations. Very uh very well done, very succinct, very clearly understandable.
Thanks. Well, I'll be back for more.
All right, well, I'm sure we'll see you next month. We've got a couple of uh remaining items here. And uh next up is uh Planning Department reports from Director Thompson.
Yes, sir. Um have a few things to go over. And let's see, um. So starting with some news, um that Victoria's going to be resigning with the town. So uh we're going to miss her. She's done an amazing job the past several years for the town. And uh we wish her the best of luck in her new uh role. Um she's pursuing another opportunity.
I'll certainly second that. She's she's done a wonderful job for us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm going, I'm gonna miss seeing all of your wonderful faces.
Well, you can still, you can still dial in wherever you're going, just to.
That's that's true.
First Monday of every month. Well, we'll look forward to seeing you, seeing you in the gallery.
That's true.
Why don't you stay put? Why don't you stay put, Victoria?
I know, I know. I just keep disappearing and coming back up.
Well, we'll miss you.
Yeah.
I know. I miss you too. And it's been nice to meet all the new planning board members too, since I've come back.
Good luck with your new venture.
Yeah, best wishes.
Thank you.
Director Thompson, what else?
So um we are looking to do in-person training. Uh hopefully in May, maybe June. So we'll be sending out an email to everybody to check your availability. So just wanted to put that out there. Again, I know we we tried to do it for that short period of time. We thought we could meet in person and. We weren't able to get it to the the logistics to work out. So um that's definitely a high priority item. Um for staff and we're sorry we haven't been able to provide that for the board sooner. So, you know, hopefully with us meeting in person in May, um we'll be able to schedule at least one session. Um also, if you remember, uh Town Manager Chris Kennedy, he mentioned um at the last meeting. That we're looking for um someone from the planning board to serve on the Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Task Force. And um we asked if anyone was interested to let us know. And I did receive some interest from Eric Braun. So um I don't think I've uh heard from anybody else being interested. So unless someone else is also interested. Um we will forward uh Mr. Braun's name to the Board of Commissioners to serve on the the task force.
I'd be happy to have any and all of you join me.
Um and then lastly, we have a couple of items for the May meeting. Um one, the big one is the U D O text amendment. So this is going to be uh mostly cleanup items, but um. And mostly from the parking lot list that was established before the U D O was adopted. So if you remember when we. Uh presented the U D O to the board, we we understood that there was a a long list, probably five hundred items. Um that has been collected over the years from board members and citizens um of what needs to be done. For the U D O. Um and the Board of Commissioners decided to go ahead and adopt the U D O, knowing that staff will be working on that. So um we'll have several of those text amendments for the board in May. And we're also, we've been working on rules of procedure for the planning board. Um we're we're going to be analyzing. Uh how many regular members, E T J members are necessary at this time. Um and presenting some proposed language to the board in May as well. And that's my report. Thank you.
And and we know, I guess, whether or not the B O C is going to have us return to uh live meetings at the town hall next month?
That we're we're working on the logistics of that, yes, sir.
So that's that's still an 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 open question and uh we'll plan on a Zoom meeting for next month unless we hear otherwise.
Yes, yes, sir. We'll definitely let you know, but fingers crossed it'll be in person.
Thanks very much, Director. Any uh further comments from the board? Uh Rick Carney's comment about the cemeteries uh having been noted. Anybody else have anything they want to uh put into the record?
Uh Carl here, Eric. Uh follow following back on something Bill Baker said quite a while back. Uh about M two, when things started happening uh down at the concrete plants. Uh Bill made a statement, Bill, correct me if my verbiage is not fully correct, but that uh. You know, should we not save and and hang on to some M two area? And I think it's a very valid thought. So, you know, we just, we just approved some M two stuff switching over. And then we have a blob, big blob of M two tucked right in behind Potterstone, which is uh. You know, which we've talked about and and Teresa explained uh it took a couple, two or three times to get through my thick head. But she did explain, we have a a placeholder for all that right now. But uh I'm just bringing it up now because, you know, we just. We just, we just sent some M two potentially i- into M U P. And uh, you know, let's think about all that stuff. That fronts on Moncur Road and south of Robinson Creek. Uh if we want to save M two, that's that's about where. It 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 kind of sits right now, so.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I uh I, you know, I would say for a a a point of uh reference. I was living in Montgomery, Alabama in the early two thousands when Hyundai built a manufacturing plant there. And the demand for small and medium-sized industrial parcels, the demand was high. Because of uh part suppliers and uh folks that made ancillary uh um items for the assembly plant. So I I think uh Bill's and Carl's points about uh mind mindfully hanging on to some of our. Industrial uh industrially zoned land is very important. Any further comments? All are welcome.
Yes, and sir, I I was going to just um inform the board of a proposed uh request. That will probably be coming to the board in the next couple of months. Um that would also involve some of the M two zoning area. So um uh you know, a good, a good chunk of that's also being proposed as residential with some commercial. Um so that, along with uh the Robeson Walk. Um property, it it, there would be a few pieces left of the the M two. But it it would, um if everything is approved, um the M two district would be significantly smaller. Um if these rezonings are approved.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing either way, whether we should save or not. You know, Pittsburgh is, you know, becoming. Or has become a bedroom community. There is a large chunk of uh manufacturing industrial land. Uh ten to twelve miles southeast of us, where the old coal-fired plant, you know, was was shut down. Uh where the where the uh electric car people are coming into. So, you know, there is a lot of industrial. Sort of zone, county zone land. Uh you know, I'm not, I'm not arguing, we need to save some. But I certainly want everyone, you know, all of us to think about it. Uh you know, you know, you know, do we need it? You know, do we want that sort of comment?
Uh that's an excellent point. We'll keep our uh eye on the pipeline to uh to uh reflect on that as we uh. As we see uh other proposals move uh forward. Well, thanks, everybody, for your comments, upcoming events. The B O C meeting is uh April eleventh at seven P M. And uh we're going to be back here on uh May the second with a location to be determined for the. Regular May Planning Board meeting. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening, everybody.
You too. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Long, Victoria.